I'd like to call the order of the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners's regular meeting for February 28, 2024. Roll call.
President Zipfeld.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner Lestrako.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
Here.
So I would like to ask Chief Bill Tierney to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
So I said to Vice President Rogers as I walked out and saw what I think is the largest attendance for a regular meeting, I whispered to him, it's just another Wednesday night in Hatfield, right? So we are extraordinarily pleased that so many people have come out to support our police officers. And this has been a very exciting evening, and so we hope that you enjoyed as much as I know we're going to. And it really is that, it's just extraordinary and a lot of fun to see so many faces, especially those who come here from time to time. It's great to have people return. So I won't bore you much more than that. We have a couple of housekeeping items that we have to get through before we get to the fun stuff. So first, is there a, I'll take a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrus. Any questions or comments with regard to the agenda before you? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of moving forward with this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we can move forward with this agenda. All right, consent items. Is there a motion to move the consent items listed in the agenda into the record?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrus.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Those consent items include: the Board of Commissioners's regular meeting minutes of January 24, 2024; the treasurer's report for the month of February; the paid bills in the amount of $213,406.67; and unpaid bills in the amount of $516,561.78. With that, I will call the question. All in favor of moving those into the record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those are moved into the record. Okay. Citizens' comments on agenda items. Any citizens' comments on agenda items? I have one resident who wants to say something, I can tell. All right, so why don't we get into the fun stuff? We actually have two great special items this evening. I think the North Penn African-American Allies Club presentation, the advisor, Carmina Taylor, is Carmina here? Oh, Ms. Taylor? Just in time. Great to have you back if we're not too, if you're, it's okay, if you're ready, we are ready to have you go right up to the podium, or we could give you a moment. This is a great evening to have this presentation. And the participants and those being recognized are Yerdana Slemma and Karina Leventure. So last year, we told you we were gonna have a bigger crowd, and we delivered.
Hello?
I don't think you need a microphone.
She might. Yeah. Just in case.
Carmina, we do need you to use it just so we can have it on the recorder.
Have it on the recorder.
I know you don't need one, but please.
Well, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? So I am not technically their advisor for their club at school. They are my student ambassadors. I play multiple roles at North Penn, but these two seniors are absolutely phenomenal. They're part of a Black Student Union group at...
African-American Allies Club.
Correct. And two weeks ago, they performed and presented a depiction of a student's experience as it relates to their perception of microaggressions, just different things. And their program was called "To Whom It Was Concerned." To Whom It Concerned. And I think it was very important for you guys to be here to listen to them. You don't really listen. And being that these are students of color, it's very important for you to understand what they glean and what they experience in their student life. And that's really what this is, is an overview. I'm almost sad to say that both of these girls are leaving. I really have separation anxiety. They're off, they're brilliant young ladies that lead this group and lead our student ambassadors program and lead actually a great deal of efforts at the high school, and we should all be proud. Yerdana is a Hatfield resident, by the way.
I'm Karina.
Oh, good. I didn't know the Karina was. So this should make you proud for them to be Hatfield residents as well, as well as seniors. So I just want to prompt that and just say that you guys are amazing young Black women, and this is a stepping stone to your future, and how you're presenting in front of all the students. How you carry yourselves. I am so proud to present these young ladies to you and their group's perspective of the student experience. Welcome there.
I'm not sure how we're gonna follow up. Okay, without further ado, I am Yerdana Slemma, the current president of AAAC, and we are so happy to be presenting to all of you today. We did not expect this huge crowd. So we are excited to show you guys about the African-American Allies Club and what we do at our high school.
Okay, so Yori already introduced herself, but my name is Karina Leventure, and I am the current vice president of AAAC. Unfortunately, our three other officers could not be with us this evening, but we do have Avery Brown as the social media coordinator, Demi Webb Dennis as the outreach coordinator, and Ayla Jamison as the treasurer, and that is just a picture of us from our show this year. So AAAC's main purpose, first and foremost, is to serve as a safe space for Black students and allies at North Penn. It can be extremely challenging as a Black student in a predominantly white space, just navigating through things such as higher-level classes where our experiences are often singular or maybe accompanied by a fellow Black student. And at our club, we strive to discuss these issues surrounding race and also greater problems within North Penn, as well as celebrating our successes. And one main point that AAAC tries to do is provide avenues for success towards Black students and promote Black excellence. We do this through providing scholarships and programs that Black students can apply to, to really make sure that they have a good foundation going into higher education and whatever passions they would like to pursue.
And with that, AAAC, we plan a Black History Showcase every year, and I want to point out that we are the only club at North Penn High School to fully produce and perform a show that is coordinated only by students, which is an amazing task that our members overcome and that our officers put a lot of time into. And the pictures above are three different pictures from different years. The show was formerly called Colors of Pride, and the first picture is Colors of Pride 2019, and then 2020, and then last year's. Every year, we have a theme that accompanies the showcase, and Karina is gonna talk about that.
Yeah, so this year, our theme was "To Whom It May Concern," and we really wanted our show to serve as a letter to our fellow students, our teachers, administrators, and the greater North Penn community, and really just address some of the issues that we face as Black students. So our show was meant to serve as a call to action, as well as a conversation starter about a lot of the racial issues happening in North Penn, and just celebrating student, Black student success, and a lot of the beauty of the diversity at North Penn. And today, we do have some clips for you to see from our show.
So now we will be showing clips from the show. Our first one is a spoken word that was written and performed by Emery Edens, who is a member of our club, and we can start that video now if you click the link.
To whom it may concern. To whom it may concern, I am not a figurehead or an object of your infatuation. I am as real as the unclear difference between what we see versus what we believe. When a phone becomes a gun and a wave becomes a fist, how can you say the difference between the two does not exist? To whom it may concern, I am not angry, but it is hard to be heard when our backs are turned towards you, so I raise my voice to get through the invisible barrier between me and you, but you can't hear me, can you? To whom it may concern, I am strong. You say that my emotions make me weak, but when the future seems bleak, they are there to show me who I am. But you can't feel that, can you? To whom it may concern, I am intelligent. I do not need to steal your spotlight when I have my own that rings with the voice of those that have seen their dreams be shot down by the color of their skin. So when will you see that pulling me down does not mean that you will win? To whom it may concern, I am Black. I am a woman. I am strong. I am smart, and I am here to stay. Thank you.
I love that poem so much. The delivery, the performance, it's all truly beautiful. It emphasizes the point of today's show, sharing our experience.
Okay, thank you.
Out of concern for time, we're not gonna show our second clip, but if you would like to see the rest of our performance, it is on NPTV on YouTube, and it really is just a beautiful show and a great collaborative effort for AAAC, and we would love to have you all view it. So just some, we found two statistics that can contextualize a lot of the problems that Black students face at North Penn, one of them being that only one out of four Black students, Black gifted students, are ever identified. That means we have three Black gifted students who never are able to join the gifted program and reap the benefits from what the North Penn gifted program aims to do. And we did expand on that further in our affirmative action segment, which is also on our YouTube channel. The second statistic is that 80% of Black women are reported to more likely change their hair to meet societal norms. And this is a huge struggle that a lot of Black women and just people in general with curly hair face at North Penn, and we did do a hair catalog section at the end of our show, and once again, you can view that on the NPTV YouTube channel, and we also touched on it in past performances if you would like to view those as well.
Finally, we want to thank all of you for listening, and if you're interested in participating and helping our club grow, we have a QR code that you can scan. We're looking for parents, organizations that are willing to support us as an organization, and you can also follow us on Instagram at NPAAA.C. And if you have any questions, we have an email up there. Thank you so much for Hatfield Township to allow us to present today.
I'm sorry, TB. Do you guys have any questions for them?
Couple of quick comments, if that's okay. First is, I think this is the second or third, no, maybe third year, third year that we've had representatives of the organization come over. Every year gets better and better. As soon as, as soon as the two of you started to speak, I thought, at your time, at your age and your time in your life, if it was me up there, I would have melted looking around at all these people. So I think that Karina absolutely, Ms. Taylor absolutely said it perfectly when she said you delivered that with grace, and it was a wonderful presentation. And I can see that there's a lot more to this presentation than just what you were able to show us tonight. So we're thrilled that we have you, and I have to add, because we think of ourselves as kind of an extended family, I'm gonna embarrass you a little bit, Karina is Vice President Bob Rogers' granddaughter, and so we keep it in the family here in the sense that we love when family members get recognized and come and contribute. This is a joy for us on a number of levels. So thank you to both of you and to your entire organization.
Aren't you ever so proud of your granddaughter?
Oh, very much so. Unbelievably proud. So I got the chance to catch it last year, I was a little late this year to catch it. They do a fantastic job. Credible.
Yeah, how about the commissioner?
I'm more than grandpa, right?
Oh, yeah.
This is a good night, that's a great start. And so our, our second special item, I'm gonna hand the ball off to Chief Bill Tierney. Police promotions and badge presentation, and we're very excited about doing this because it's been kind of a long time in coming because of COVID and whatnot. So Chief, microphone literally is yours.
I want everybody to join me now.
Oh.
As we discussed in the bank.
That's right.
Hear me? Clearly with that, I've been set up for total failure because those young women... Thanks. Actually, before we get started, I'd like to introduce our civil service. That's Commissioner Laura Thomas with him as well. Is Pat Hanahan here? And did Tom make his way back? Tom, again? Anyway, our civil service commission, where's civil service? I don't have an outlet for that. So as Commissioner Zipfeld said... Who's to turn that around? So we've had the same badge that we'll see on the officers for over 40 years now. Hatfield Police instead of Hatfield. And... Had one. I really want people to look around and like know that everybody here is... And with that, I think we're gonna start officer promotions, so... Loved ones with you to hold the boughs?
Okay, we have two, oh, is it the same time? Oh, okay, well, it was a good... All right, so I do solemnly swear, I will support, obey, and defend... I will discharge the duties, Hatfield Lieutenant with... Coordinances of Hatfield Township, Hatfield Borough, at best of my ability, my moral obligation, badge, my integrity, my character, for the public trust.
Lieutenant Boyd is badge number 41, and he's been serving. Lieutenant Graham is badge 49. Sergeant Mike Sloan. Mike had been serving since June 21st. 2007. Detective Sergeant Bill Steinberg.
Ready? All right. I do solemnly swear, I will support, obey, and defend, Constitution of the United States, Constitution of this Commonwealth, that I will discharge the duties of Hatfield Sergeant with fidelity. I will support, obey, and defend, Hatfield Township, Hatfield Borough, my duties impartially, best of my ability. My sworn duty, a pledge never to betray, my badge, my integrity, my character, for the public trust.
And now we're gonna do detectives and detective corporal. Detective Corporal Eric Geiger. Eric has been serving since June 27, 2005. Detective Anthony Baker. All right, we'll have none of that. Anthony has been serving since November 8, 2016. Detective Ryan Saunders. Ryan's been serving since April 17.
All right, oath of office. I do solemnly swear, obey, and defend. Discharge the duties. Hatfield Detective. Detective Corporal. Detective Corporal. Fidelity. Hatfield Borough. My duties impartially. Best of my ability. Ledge to never betray. My integrity.
Next up Lieutenant Jane Robertson. That would actually be August 14th of. Lieutenant Boyd, can you come up? Jeff's going to lead us through the fires through the COVID years, as we'll call them, so he's up to bat now. Officer Malkin, Officer Kivlin. Officer Sylvia. Heard there's going to be a crowd here tonight for Nicole. Officer Hefner. Want to read a brief bio of the newer and newest officers that have come up here. Unfortunately, due to pandemic, they never had this opportunity. We want to give it to them tonight. Starting with Officer Malkin. He was born and raised in Hatfield Township and graduated from North Penn High School in 2007. Zach obtained an associate's degree in emergency management and planning from Montgomery County Community College in 2010. In the fall of 2010, Zach enlisted in the United States Marine Corps and was deployed to Afghanistan in 2012. Zach's MOS was a generator mechanic. Zach's enlistment was fulfilled in 2017 and he was honorably discharged in 2018 after achieving the rank of sergeant. In 2018, Zach attended the Yountown Police Academy Class 102 after being hired by Bethlehem Township Police Department where he worked for two years. On March 16th, 2020, literally the day everything shut down. Officer Malkin was hired by the Hatfield Police Department where he's assigned to the Patrol Division. Officer Malkin credits his wife of nine years, Rachel, for giving him the support needed to become a police officer after his military service ended. Officer Malkin and his wife have two children and another on the way. Officer Pat Kivlin was born in Doylestown, PA and raised in Jamison Bucks County. Pat graduated from Central Bucks South High School and attended Bloomsburg University where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in communication studies. Pat worked briefly for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department before being hired by the Hatfield Police Department on May 20th, 2021. Pat was then sponsored by Hatfield PD to attend the Montgomery County Community College Police Academy Class 2102, graduating in December of 2021. Officer Kivlin is currently assigned to Patrol Division and is joined here tonight by his mom, dad, brother, sister and his wife. Officer Nicole Sylvia was born in Secaucus, New Jersey and raised in Warrington, PA. Nicole graduated from Central Bucks South High School in 2017, then continued her education at Bucks County Community College, receiving an associate's degree in criminal justice in 2019. Nicole then attended Penn State Abington where she received her bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in sociology in 2020. Nicole graduated from Temple's Police Academy in 2021, Class 2101. And on March 23rd, 2022, Officer Sylvia was hired by the Hatfield Police Department and is currently assigned to Patrol Division. Officer Sylvia's first policing job and she is joined here tonight by about 50 friends and family. Officer Riley Hefner. Officer Hefner was born and raised in East Greenville and graduated from Southern Lehigh High School in 2019. Riley continued her education at Liberty University, graduating with a bachelor's degree in business administration in the fall of 2021. And the math is right, so that's early. After working briefly in the private sector, Riley was hired by Hatfield PD on November 9th, 2022. And was sponsored to attend the Montgomery County Community College Police Academy Class 2301. Officer Hefner is currently assigned to the Patrol Division. Congratulations Riley. Have whoever bombed back.
I do solemnly swear. That I will support, obey and defend. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of this Commonwealth. That I will discharge the duties. Hatfield Police Officer. With fidelity. Hatfield Township. Hatfield Borough. My duties impartially. Best of my ability. My moral obligation. My sworn duty. Ledge to never betray. Edge, my integrity, my character, public trust.
I have Officer Michael Kalas. Officer Matthew Barnett, Officer Matthew DiLorenz and Officer Nick Whalen. Officer Michael Kalas was born and raised in the suburbs of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, graduating from. In North Huntington. Mike continued his education at California University of Pennsylvania where he was the captain and all-American men's soccer player, graduating from Cal with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Mike began his career in policing with the University of Pittsburgh Police Department, then was hired by Castle Shannon Borough PD. Where he spent eight years before moving to the east coast of Pennsylvania. On May 1st, 2023, Officer Kalas was hired by the Hatfield Police Department, is currently assigned to the Patrol Division. Officer Kalas is joined here tonight by his wife, Victoria Kalas. Officer Matthew Barnett was born and raised in Hatfield, graduating from Lansdale Catholic High School in 2013. Matt continued his education at Penn State Abington where he majored in American Studies, receiving his bachelor's degree in 2017. After a short stint working in corrections, Matt was hired by the Philadelphia Police Department in 2019. After graduating from their police academy, Matt was assigned to the 18th District in southwest Philadelphia. On May 1st, 2023, Matt was hired by Hatfield Police Department and is currently assigned to the Patrol Division. Shortly after being hired, Matt and his wife, Shania, welcomed the baby boy Bryson, their first child. And both of whom are here this evening along with Matt's parents and his sister. Congratulations. Officer Matthew DiLorenz was born in the Langhorn area and raised in East Norton, PA. Matt attended Pope John Paul II High School and graduated in 2018. Matt continued his studies at East Stroudsburg University, playing collegiate football, majoring in criminal justice and psychology. Matt graduated from East Stroudsburg with his bachelor's degree in 2022. On May 1st, 2023, Matt was hired by Hatfield PD and sponsored to attend Temple University's Police Academy Class 2301, graduating in October of 2023. Officer DiLorenz is currently assigned to the Patrol Division and is joined here tonight by his mother Jen, father Joe, brother Nick and Matt's girlfriend Gabriella. Congratulations, Matt. Officer Nicholas Wallen was born and raised in Limerick, PA, the oldest of three siblings. Nick also attended Pope John Paul II High School, graduating in 2017. Nick attended the Montgomery County Community College Police Academy Class 2202 and graduating in December of 2022. Nick worked as a public safety officer at Gwynn and Mercy University before being hired by Hatfield PD on May 1st, 2023. Officer Wallen is currently assigned to Patrol Division and is supported here tonight by his parents, grandmother, siblings and friends. Congratulations, Nick. Come on up and join your officers.
I do solemnly swear. I will support, obey and defend. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of this Commonwealth. I will discharge the duties. Hatfield Police Officer. With fidelity. Obey and defend. Coordinates of Hatfield Township. Hatfield Borough. My duties impartially. Best of my ability. My moral obligation. My sworn duty. I pledge to never betray. Edge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. Congratulations to all of you.
Badge number 33. Badge number 37. Badge number 50 is Officer. Hatfield since January 6th.
Lieutenant Graham. Heck, been serving since. Officer Matt Bachman, badge number 59, serving since November. Come back to Matt. Badge number 63, Officer Alex Marcek, serving since. Badge number 65, Officer Brian McLaughlin. Serving since July 16th. Matt's changing a child's diaper if I'm not mistaken, so he will return.
So I have the honor of handing out kind of the last badge of the evening. If I do that, I wanted to say a few words. Not related to Chief, but to the entire. At our meetings and from time to time. Have all of you here and. Out because it is. Come tonight with. Also, our way of saying we trust. I have, that could express it any better than. Know that you're the ones who are home worrying about your spouse, significant other, you know, son, daughter. We know that when they're out and you're sitting at home wondering if everything's okay.
Matt, come on up here. Last but not least. Matt Bachman again. Matt Bachman again.
So in the grand scheme of life, I'm pretty sure that that's one of those smaller moments of what he was doing was remarkably important. So we're very, we don't mind that happening at all. When we say that we like to feel as though. Recognize it as that. And so the. I favor things to do. Thank you is to embarrass people a little bit. Constantly is, is a good way of putting it. I might have a couple of words that are maybe said at his expense, but before I tease him, let me start off by saying. Mark will be proud of how he runs it and everything. Half of all the residents. I could also tell you that we spend an enormous amount of time teasing him. I don't know, just his wit and wisdom or lack thereof. And maybe the, the, the shine that follows him around when lights are above. And, but we do that because, you know, in my family, my personal family. Valued by them and they feel the same way. That is the relationship that he has fostered. Township manager and really quite frankly, everyone who I've met has always had that same feeling for me. That is just, it speaks. A personal note, I'll tell you that. Not just because he runs a fantastic. Also because at the worst moments in people's lives. Have been events over the last. Moments in time when you need someone at solid rock. And he has always filled that role. Whether it's professionally or even personally. Difficulty, he was a rock. There were others. There was a moment in time when between Manager Aaron Bebrow and Pat Hanrahan, who's here tonight, they did some just guiding things that you would do. Passes that just made. Does it? And he's everywhere. And so probably, you know, I didn't tease him enough. His head is probably way too big now, but it is quite frankly, my honor to give him his.
Trust me, the only thanks I need is what I get from all of them every day. I honestly mean that. Want to embarrass a couple more people? Like Lindsey, can you come up? So Lindsey is our admin manager and evidence specialist. Now that I have all my witnesses here, you should be. Does a magnificent job. Now, an administrative assistant. Christie is our data and administration analyst. Also have two of our cadets here. Actually, in the Montgomery County Police. A cadet Ryan Boyd and cadet Tyler Forre. They're actually, they'll be out of the academy in June. Two of the 10 that we've hired through the whole. And changes aren't done coming, so. Ever with a thought.
Yeah. Families, if you'd like to take photographs.
Maybe even group shots before.
Everybody but six or seven. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought you said the other way. I was like, no, no, they're all yours. Oh, yeah.
So people can get out of the aisles.
One way or the other, we'll sort.
Yeah. If I get pulled over, I'm telling my brothers.
Those famous. I, I could.
Here, do that. Do you two first.
I was signing her up the whole time. She was sitting right behind me. She got the.
Here, boys.
Here, stand on my back.
Hey, Bill. Bill, are you trying to get everybody?
Get at it.
Because there's guys out the hall. You want me to get them? I'll get them. Oh, you got it. There they are.
They're gonna get that.
How you doing, Tweety?
He tried. Well, so the, the end all will be all.
Open his house or.
God.
Yes. That's the day. You can't see us. That's the thing. Oh, for sure. Sorry, yeah. In fact, he gave us a selfie.
You did good.
Oh, my God. Can I slow it down? First drink for you. Yes, you had, you had the perfect view. You did. Did. I miss you anyway. I'm sending lovely kisses. You give me a smooch too. I'm gonna take. We'll get them all fixed up until you see if it got.
Thanks, Cam. Appreciate it.
Everybody leave? Where'd you go?
Yeah? Everybody ran anyway. Everybody shot out.
Jay and Rich and all them rolled?
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought so. Yeah, I haven't seen them. They were out there for a little bit. Surprised Pat's still out there.
He's working on his age retirement.
Yeah.
I'm doing good. All right, we keep us safe tonight, Lou. You be up doing it?
Yeah, I guess you're the shepherd, so. Change of pace. I'm starting to show myself.
Oh, I remember that. Up, down, come on, there it is. Cam, I'm going to carry one. That picture, please, return.
Thank you for the picture.
It's like we're off the right now, man. The tissue was coming tomorrow, okay? I'm gonna call Papa and Dad now.
We're gonna win this damn.
Something's wrong.
He demands that you bring that in.
You have the whole way. You ever see?
You were, you were just. I'm still covered by part of their contract, but then I have a work agreement. I'm in ministry. So I'm not.
You, you still do negotiate, oh, you're wrong. I want to see, I want to see the rest of the shooting. Look like the tip, so.
That's the way the shoes are made. Mad at finish. Heeling's out.
I think a quick drink isn't a worry. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
So how come you don't have the stripes?
Trying to feel unloved. What's that? We're unloved. Let's just acknowledge that. Captain Pulling, we're unloved.
Get out. Nobody saved us.
Ted, gotta get you.
Tom, do you want some action shots? Are you running the media?
No, no, no action shots. Yeah. Fewer shots of me is better. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Need a helping out, okay?
See you, Greg.
Take care. Thanks. That's pretty cool. That's real cool.
Quickly, huh? Things are changing quickly in here.
I was wondering, I didn't know if that was, uh.
Well, we have a few more things we have to do, but they're rather boring. Much bo- much more boring in comparison, I assure you. Oh, yes. This is like a regular crowd. Now you're seeing what a regular crowd looks like. Thank you.
I'm a whole lot more comfortable talking to this kind of crowd.
No, you can go celebrate with your family. Thank you for offering, though. Two weeks from now, anytime, every other Wednesday, second and fourth Wednesday. Come on back. Oh, we'll be here all week. What's that?
I had no idea how many people to figure for us. That would have been, you need a hundred people.
No, no, you're welcome.
Who else threw up? Like five people threw up, the dogs threw up.
Is that, is that attack plans for?
Great experience. Myself, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Perfect crowd.
Well, we, we, we might be walking out the door with you. These are gonna be pretty quick, so.
We got the timer started.
That's right, that's right. All right, let's get the timer going. Commissioner, uh, former Commissioner Hughes would, uh, be pleased with, I think, the speed with which I'll move through these unless somebody has an objection. So, one, we have, uh, seven action items. Um, let's, uh, jump right into the first, which is Resolution 2403. Is there a motion for approval of that resolution to commence the 18-month maintenance period for the Firefox development? So moved. Motion by Commissioner Andrews.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Aaron, I think the first three are all kind of related in the sense that they're maintenance period, uh, items for three, for three different resolutions. Why don't you just kind of describe the first one and then we'll take the next two?
Sure, no problem, uh, Mr. President. Uh, our engineer, Brian, two weeks ago described it well. This is the completion of a land development project. Now, the, the improvements must be guaranteed for 18 months. The applicants post security, uh, to, uh, to guarantee those. If, if the trees fail, if the sidewalks crack, if the basins fail, uh, we still have the ability to have them fix that for 18 months. So the, the next three items are all the same, different projects.
Different projects, different properties. So, okay, so let's take that. Unless, is, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of Resolution 24 dash 03, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Next, Resolution 2404. Is there a motion for approval to commence the 18-month maintenance period for the Fortuna Station project?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestrako. Uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of Resolution 2404, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any opposition? Nope. All right, so that is approved. Uh, action item number three, Resolution 2405. Is there a motion for approval of the commencement of the 18-month maintenance period for the Fox Meadow Drive?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers. Second by Commissioner Partha. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of that resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right, uh, and the next two are kind of, uh, similar, uh, I believe, so, uh, I'll, uh, take a motion, uh, to award the contract to Action Target for $844,410 as budgeted and recommended by Boyle Construction, and this is for the Police Station Project Co-Stars firing range package. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Vice President Rogers. Aaron, why don't you talk to us a little bit about this one and the next one?
Sure. Thanks, uh, Mr. President. Uh, this is the, all of the equipment that's associated with the range at the new station. Shell itself and the building itself was approved in December. Once that was approved, then our construction manager has been working with vendors and the police department, um, the actual users of the facility to, uh, price and find, uh, what they think is the best product. So this will be purchased through Co-Stars, meaning we don't have to formally bid it, but it already has been bid through a state, uh, cooperative purchasing program, and, uh, this is the price, which is included in the total project. It's already been budgeted and borrowed for. This is not in addition. This is just another step along the way. Um, we're pretty much done with these larger, probably the last large item of the project. Um, and then we'll have smaller ones come up throughout the project, but, uh, probably the last two. And then the next item is associated with a, uh, a third party who tests the soil throughout the construction, um, period. So that was a requirement, and again, similar process. This time is a professional service, so no bids required, but you'll see in the packet, our, uh, construction management team had reached out and solicited seven different prices, seven different conversations. They picked the one that happened to be the lowest and the one that they were most confident in. Um, so both of these associate with the new station, uh, item four and five.
And so these are all, this is not on, uh, as budgeted. These are expected expenses in the sense of, right? It's not in addition to what we've previously, uh, publicly discussed.
Correct. Same project, yes.
Okay, any, uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of action item, the motion for action item number four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Action item number five, uh, is there a motion to award the contract to Hillis Karns Engineering Associates for a not-to-exceed amount of $44,900 as recommended by Boyle Construction for the Police Station Project, specifically the soil testing and inspection services? Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lestrako.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion related to action item number five, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Last two items, um, Resolution 2406. Is there a motion to approve the HTMA Municipal Authority's 2024-2025 budget as presented, uh, at our last meeting?
So moved.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Andrews.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Um, Aaron, I maybe want to just mention this one, um.
Sure. Yeah, be happy to. So we had Pete Dorni here two weeks ago, the executive director of HTMA, who outlined the budget as he does every year. This budget does include an increase. That, um, which explained, uh, the rising costs associated with providing the service, um, with the increases. Costs, and, uh, the authority in Hatfield is among the lowest. Two authorities in the region. Commissioners have toured the facility many times. Uh, but providing a very essential service to our community. So, like, every year, the commissioners have to approve the budget, even though HTMA's board and have developed, um, their own.
All right, any questions or comments?
Dinner than that. No way.
Interesting tour, for sure. We'll leave it at that. And if Pete were here, we would say that in front of him as well. All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of Resolution 24 dash 06, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Last action item, tax appeal settlement for parcels 35 dash 00 dash 10759 dash 00 dash 6 and 35 dash 00 dash 10759 dash 00 dash 6. Uh, our solicitor will explain to us what that means in just a moment. Is there a motion for approval of that tax settlement, uh, proposal?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lestrako, second by Commissioner Andrews. Mr., um, Solicitor, will you explain?
Before you go, both of those were the same parcel. Were they meant to be? Uh, no, they're, they should be two separate parcels.
Oh, you're right. They are numerically the same.
Correctly stated in the tax. One number apart there, Jake.
Yeah, yeah.
But what's for the board's consideration tonight is a tax assessment stipulation from a 2022 school district appeal, which, uh, parties agreed to increase. House building on Walnut.
And for those people who follow, uh, but not entirely sure how this all works, we normally ride the coattails of the school district analysis. Is that a fair description?
Yes, so when you file a tax assessment appeal, they get, uh, appraisals done and then they talk.
All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion associated with action item number seven, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Citizens' comments? Katie? We went literally from the largest group that we've had in many years to the smallest group we've had in many years. So it's been quite a, quite an evening, uh, although a great evening. So, uh, if there are no citizens' comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Lestrako. By everyone. Any questions or comments about adjournment? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thanks for coming out, folks.